Straightforward, straightforward. So when a person is straightforward, says other person, they're honest and frank. And then the synonyms would be honest, frank, candid, open, truthful, sincere. And I just, I don't know what could be, yeah, what could be more attractive than somebody who's open and honest with you?
Straightforward with Strip. Fishbowl Radio Network, FBRN dot U S. You are now logged on to Straightforward with Strip. It is a lovely Friday afternoon, you know, and uh, it's beautiful right here in Arlington, Texas, inside Globe Life Park, right across the street from Texas Live. And uh, it's not just me today, you know, so we're not gonna get into me and anything. Who cares about me, right? Nobody. No, I'm playing, I'm playing. We are here for a very important reason, you know, especially around this season, which is election time. We cannot get around it, cannot beat it. Uh, one of my homeboys is like, man, I don't really wanna, you know, hear about the elections and everything. I'm like, yo, how can we not talk about the elections? And while talking about the elections, I wanted to have somebody in here who was well-versed in, you know, the, the political game, man, who might know a thing or two about what he's talking about. And I for one am uh, a proud supporter of this guy, you know, cuz I've actually seen him come on in here and uh, do what he said he was gonna do. Let's welcome Arlington City Councilmember Marvin Sutton. What's going on, sir?
Thank you, Gary. I totally appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be on your show.
Ah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I'm glad you can come back, you know, um, if you're following Straightforward with Strip, we've actually had him on uh, previously. And that was a little, you know, um, you were already city councilman and everything.
Yes.
And uh, and um, so now what is going on? We wanna know because Arlington City Councilman District what?
District three. Southeast Arlington is the most diverse and the largest district in the city of Arlington.
Really?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, nice, nice. And so what initially, you know, made you wanna run for city council?
I, I think the initial part is city council and most local state and federal governments deal with public safety. And so we had an incident where one of my neighbor's house was broken into and I wasn't really quite pleased with the response time of first responders. And then that led me to organize and create a crime watch group. And then I attended my first town hall meeting. And a gentleman came up with this kid and said this kid almost got run over on this road called Mansfield Web Road. And I remember distinctly, and we're trying to brainstorm and see what we can do, and we said, maybe we can put some uh, infrastructure, sidewalks, curves, lights. Uh, so it's a poorly-lit road.
Yeah.
And uh, a few years later, we went to the councilman who had promised he would get it done through a bond election. And I, I inquired about what wasn't part of one of the bond items. And he said, look, the bond committee made the decision. I said, but you're the ultimate election official. You make that decision. And I decided at that point I would run to make a difference, to have a seat at the table. And so I ran.
Man, okay, so it was something that like, wasn't quite pleasant, you know, that initially, you know, made you like, hold on, I wanna do something about it.
Right.
Man, okay, that's intense. And you actually like, went to the guy responsible.
I did. And that's how you uh, make changes in your community is you go to your elected officials.
Yeah.
And you advocate for your causes. And hopefully, they can see your point of view and carry that to the council. And, and most city councils, you're policymakers, you're problem solvers. And, and I tell people when I was running is the only reason we have local government is when you can't individually resolve a problem, government takes the resources to resolve those problems.
Okay, nice, nice. And, and, and that's something uh, I'm glad that you highlighted because that's something, you know, just recently, the past couple of years, I've been noticing more and more and trying to take a little more seriously, which is local government. And so we all know what's going on right now, you know, the, the, the big election, I guess you've been commenting and everything. Uh, what is your, you know, your take on, on, on the climate right now and what's going on with the election and why is it taking so long? Is this normal or?
Well, give you a little about my background. I'm uh, I spent twenty years as a presiding election judge in Southeast Arlington. I've been a deputy registrar for over twenty years. I've registered over three thousand voters. I've worked on several campaigns, including my own uh, my story is, I run, the first time I ran, I lost my race in two thousand and seven, and I ran additional four times and lost. And then the fifth time, I came as close as I could to winning where I lost by three votes, asked for a recount and lost by two. Last year, I won after a twelve-year period of time. So uh, running for office is difficult, it's challenging. But if you have the passion and the courage to run, I encourage you to do so. So let's talk a little about the, the national race. There's a misnomer that people believe that once you go out and vote in November, that takes care of everything.
Right.
When in fact, when you're actually voting in November, you're voting to send electors to the Secretary of State on December fourteenth. Thirty-eight individuals from throughout the state of Texas will convene on our Capitol and will be sworn in by the Secretary of State.
And this is like the Electoral College, right?
Those are Electoral Colleges, absolutely. Those particular individuals are elected during what we call our state convention. And there are thirty-eight, and that number is a combined of the total number of members we send to the US House of Representatives, which is six, and our two US repres- two US senators. So with the count being where it is, and we, we wanna make sure we do it right. Obviously, there's some uncertainties in any, in any election. And because we have this democracy, this big experiment we call democracy where people rule, we wanna make sure people's voices are reflected, and we wanna make sure it's transparent and it's open.
Yes, sir.
So there's some uh, thought process says, let's hurry up and get it done, but we don't want to get it done right away. We wanna make sure it's done in an orderly fashion. So you've got these thirty-eight Electoral Colleges from the state of Texas that'll be sworn in, but until we determine that magic number two seventy, and that two seventy comes from uh, the hundred members we send to the United States Senate. Plus the four hundred and thirty-five members that we send to US Congress, plus the three members we have from the District of Columbia. That gives us a total of five hundred and thirty-eight. If you divide that in half, Gary, that's two hundred and sixty-nine, and you need one more to have a majority. So that's why you look at the two seventy.
Okay, okay. And, and this is a lot of numbers and a lot of terms and names and everything, so I, so I really just wanna ask like the blunt question, like, does our vote matter if it comes down to the Electoral College stuff?
Absolutely, it does. So imagine you're going out to vote for the President of Texas in essence.
Yes.
So we let each fifty states elect the President of their state. And we send what's called electors, instead of electing the President, we send our electors to elect that individual for us. So yes, your vote does count, absolutely.
Okay, okay, nice, nice. Cuz yeah, there's a lot of speculation and a lot of talk and rumors and everything about like, you know, like basically, no matter who we vote, the Electoral College basically like has the ultimate decision, you know, on who like wins that state, you know, like per state. Cuz if it goes by like, you know, you need two hundred and seventy electoral votes to win, like, what is the, what are our votes? Like, what are the popular votes?
Right. So, so let's, let's take a look at our governor race. In, in two years, we'll have a gubernatorial race for governor.
Yes.
Almost similar to a president, but the president of our state. The majority of the votes cast determines who becomes our governor. So imagine that the majority of the votes for president, those electors go and determine who's our president for our state. And once that number hits two seventy, he becomes the President of the United States.
Okay, okay. And I see like, we have it on the TV right here, you know, Biden's been at two fifty-three and Donald Trump is at two fourteen, you know, and I think we're waiting on Nevada, you know, that's one of the states.
We're waiting on about six states to complete the count.
Yeah.
Once they complete the count and determine the outcome of the election in each state, they've actually elected the President of their state.
Yes.
Once that number of electors goes and we've hit two hundred and seventy, that individual will become the President of the United States.
Okay, okay. If you're just now logging on or watching the video right now or listening to the stream, we're here right now, live in the studio with Arlington City Councilman District?
Three.
District three, Marvin Sutton right now. But he's not stopping at city council. What's going on in Marvin Sutton's future, Mr. City Councilman?
So back in July, uh, actually back, this July fourth, I announced on my Facebook page that I'm running for Mayor of the City of Arlington.
Mayor?
Mayor of City of Arlington. And that seat has become an open seat due to our charter amendment called term limits, which means our mayor has served, served six years. That's the maximum he can serve in that position.
Man, okay. And how do you feel about term limits? Cuz I know we've had like voting and propositions about that.
So I supported term limits. And, and here's the beauty of it, uh, Gary, term limits, when we started pushing for that measure to get on the ballot, we had to secure all over twelve thousand signatures to get it on the ballot.
Man, to even make it a thing.
And at that time, the current council was made up of only one African-American on the council.
Really?
We currently have two African-Americans on the council.
Yeah.
We actually made history. It's never been in the history of our city where we had two African-Americans serving at the same time.
Wow.
But as of this past election, we've got another young lady, her name is Ruby Woolridge. She was just elected, she was just elected to the council, which means we have three that will be currently serving on Arlington City Council. So we're excited.
Yeah, that's amazing. Okay, great, great. And when is like the next election? Like if I was interested in running for a city council position?
So.
Are some seats getting open or anything sometime soon?
Yeah, there's a, we serve two-year terms, so at the end of our two-year terms, either we run for reelection or we don't.
Yes.
So in the state of Texas, there's an election every year in November and every year in May. They're called uniform election dates. So every first two, see, after the first Monday of November, there's an election. Except in an even number year, you, you're actually voting for individuals. In an odd number year, you're voting for what we call proposition or statements.
Yes.
In the city of Arlington, every first Saturday in May, we're holding an election.
Really?
We're holding an election.
And how do like, we find like this sort of information, you know, like somebody like me, somebody that's between the, you know, the age of like eighteen and thirty-five, you know, and like, really just like, isn't well-versed in this and, you know, isn't very knowledgeable in the, in the system and the game and how the things work?
Well, the city does put it out on its website, elections. There's also local elections, school board elections. Most of that information can be found online or at Tarrant County uh, Elections website. Most of the civil rights groups will advertise that information, such as uh, Arlington branch of the N W S P or even LULAC. So if you're ever having questions about election information, feel free to go to Tarrant County Elections. It has a website that'll list the next election.
Yes, okay, nice.
Or even the Secretary of State website.
That's perfect, that's perfect. And so uh, you making the decision to run for mayor, how did that initially come about? And you know, was that something out of something unpleasant? Or just because the mayor can't, the mayor now can't get reelected?
That because I served on the council and I have a passion to serve. Gary, since I've been seventeen, I've been committed to serving. At the age seventeen, I enlisted in the Air Force. I served our country honorably for eight years. And then when I got out of the Air Force, I became a federal air traffic controller, and I've served in that capacity for over thirty years. And then when I completed.
Air traffic controller?
Thirty years. And then the year after that, I became elected to city council.
Wow.
And I've served, I've learned the system, and now there's an opportunity to service mayor. I'm not running against an incumbent. It's an open seat. It allows to bring fresh and new ideas.
Yes.
That's the reason I'm serving.
That's awesome, that's cool. And so like, uh, what are basically, you know, like your principles or something you wanna like change or see happen in the city of Arlington?
Well, you know, uh.
Specifically for like middle and lower-class people, cuz that's who like I am and where I come from, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And, and so the city has grants that they award to certain groups. We have a program called the M W B E, which stands for uh, Minority Women Business-owned Enterprise. And when I first got on the council, I looked at it and I wasn't really pleased with the percentage that African-Americans can get.
Yeah.
Now, they will tell you that twenty-five percent goal have been reached with N W B Es, but African-Americans only receive one percent. Which, which bothers me because we make up a population of twenty-three percent of Arlington, act, to be exact, twenty-two point five percent.
Man.
And so we have to do a better job.
So like, uh, black people in the city of Arlington, we're only getting one percent of the pie?
That's correct.
Man.
And so we gotta do a better job of doing it. We uh, just got a report called a disparity study that lets us know what's going on with the contracts and what we can try to do as a group.
Do you feel like, you know, like uh, like, like racism or some type of like racial issue has something to do with it? Or is it just like the lack of knowledge on our part or a mix? Like what do you think?
It's a little bit of both. You have institutional racism in most organizations, but I think we have to better prepare ourselves
Yes.
for those particular jobs and contracts. So you have personal services and you have uh, vendor contracts. And so if we can better prepare our upcoming population to be in a better position to be awarded those contracts, it'd help what our goal and our objective of increasing those, those percentages.
Okay, okay, nice, nice. So I dig that. And you did mention, you know, there is institutional racism, so I wanna ask you, are you familiar with um, the situation out there in the city of McKinney with LaShadyon Shimwell?
I am familiar. Matter of fact, I met him last year and we did talk briefly.
Well, uh, just to keep it straightforward, you know, what are your thoughts on that? Cuz it kinda gets me fired up because it does look like they targeted the only black man on city council in the city of McKinney.
And it does, but without having all the ideas would be, be, I would be speaking prematurely on it without looking at all the data around it. So I like to reserve those comments. Uh, it, it bothers me when you have to recall, but we need to take a further, deeper dive into why the recall took place.
Okay, nice, nice. And so uh, I dig that. I appreciate your take on that. Um, so the election going on right now with the presidential election, are you happy or unhappy right now?
Well, right now, with the way the numbers looking, I'm happy.
Yeah.
I am excited. We'll, we'll have something new, fresh and exciting. We've got a lot of work to do.
Oh, yeah.
We, we wanna make sure we overcome the COVID nineteen pandemic. We wanna make sure we get our economy up and running again. And we wanna make sure we have equity in the system. So yes, I'm excited.
Okay, nice, nice. Uh, but like, you know, with uh, you know, the new fresh, you know, possible replacement in the White House uh, coming, there's a lot of um, coming into play. There's a lot of, you know, talk and speculation about, you know, this nineteen ninety-four crime bill and his history and, and the things he's said about people of color, specifically black people, you know, um, how do you feel about Joe Biden and like what he said? You know, the thing about the jungle, you know, his kids going to school with the jungle animals and stuff like?
And, and I, I disagree with those concepts. I think he realized it was a mistake. He has since apologized for those. And either we accept apology or we reject it. But at the end of the day, Gary, we got to move on. And they say, always keep it positive, always keep it moving.
Okay.
So let's keep it positive, let's keep it moving, let's make those necessary changes.
Nice.
For, for those policies.
Yes, sir. That's awesome, that's awesome. And so with you running for mayor and everything, um, I know it like will specifically like go down to, I guess, the governor or who does it go down to uh, for like marijuana legalization? And like, why is Texas taking so long?
That's a good question. So that, that's a state function. The state sets the law. It's actually a federal law. It, the state chooses to enforce it or not. And so we as a state can legalize, we can legalize it as a state. It's not a city's prerogative to do that. It's outside of our jurisdiction.
Yes.
So the state would have to do it. And it would have to be a referendum, which means everybody get to vote on it, like legalizing marijuana or legalizing gambling in our state.
Yeah, okay. And how do you feel about both? Gambling, I mean, I don't really care. I'm from Las Vegas, so the gambling, I don't, I'm not much of a gambler and everything. But like, the marijuana stuff, I feel like, you know, that's still an issue facing, you know, people of color, you know what I'm saying, in the community I come from.
And it is. Uh, I, I don't think you have to lock people up or arrest them, incarcerate them for, for a violation, I think, and get a citation to shore up in court.
Like how Dallas did the site and release thing?
Site and release, absolutely.
How can we get that in Arlington?
The Arlington City Council can do that.
Yeah.
And we hadn't had that discussion yet. We would have to work with our law enforcement partners to make sure there's something that we can do together. I'm indifferent to gambling. I do lottery, but I don't do it as much as I used to. But I do know that Shreveport or Louisiana and Oklahoma does have those facilities there. It would be an idea that I would like to get some coalition or, or build some support around. I think the funding is there. The only element that, that would concern me would be if it causes undue side effects, where people are spending their, their rent money and their food money in hope of doing that. That would concern me. As far as marijuana, I'm not on board with it as of yet. I do understand it has medicinal purposes, but I'm still.
You're not in favor.
I'm still soul-searching on that one.
Yeah, soul-searching. So there was no like college day experimentation?
I, you know, I've never experimented with marijuana cigarettes, or even drinking. I've never drank.
Really, man, that's awesome. Okay, well, and you said you've been serving since the age of seventeen, so.
Absolutely, yeah, that's probably why.
That's awesome, that's awesome. So like, what do you think like would help, you know, like since you've never, you know, partaken in anything, what do you think like would help get you on board with the movement? Because like, man, like, you look at, you know, the stats and the numbers going on in like California and Nevada, Colorado and Oregon and everything, like crime dropping, depression dropping, and everybody just chilling, being happy, making money and all that stuff. But like Arlington, yo, like you can go to jail for like a, you know what I'm saying, a little peace.
So I would have to look at the economic impact. I would have to look at uh, the impact on our communities. And then there's always a cost-benefit analysis. You look at what benefit would be derived from that public policy and the cost of doing that, or implementing those policies. And take a look, and then you weigh one, and which one gives you the more weight, the more benefit, it's the one I would go with.
That's awesome.
So I'd have to do my homework on it, Gary, to be honest with you.
Okay, for sure, for sure. That's cool. And, and how again, you know, will we like get something like that on the item agenda for city council to like decide on and everything?
Well, the uh, the city manager sets the agenda, but any council member can ask for something to be on the agenda so we can have a conversation. Staff will do some research and present a report to council. We'll do some deliberation, have some conversation about it. But you as an individual can call your council members, you can call the mayor, you can meet with the city manager and ask, hey, this is what I think would be good. And you can be uh, an advocate, create a coalition, go talk to people, get a signature, start a petition. You can get it on uh, on our ballot.
Yeah.
But you gotta get so many signatures, they have to be verified. So that's one way of engaging the community and getting way where the community is on it.
Okay, nice, nice. That's awesome. And I don't wanna take away the fact, um, or, or the, you know, one of the reasons you're here is because, you know, you're Arlington City Councilman for District three right now, and you wanna run for mayor. When is that election? When can we vote on, you know, our mayor?
Like I said earlier, the election and the local municipalities are every first Saturday in the month of May. So this first Saturday is gonna be May first. So you can vote prior to May first, uh, which should be first couple of weeks in April.
Yes.
And that would be the start of the election process.
So you can start voting in April?
You can start voting close to the end of April. The election day is Saturday, May first.
Okay, awesome, nice, nice. And how do you feel about, you know, your run for mayor? You feeling positive about it or?
I am. I, it's a, it's an uphill battle, obviously. Uh, you gotta have a lot of money between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars to run for, which I won't have. But I have other ways of substituting the money with sweat equity.
Okay.
And, and the goal and the number of, the goal of achieving your outcome is get as many people to vote for you as possible. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter about the money, doesn't matter about the big signs, doesn't matter about the fantastic speeches. What matters is the number of people that come out to vote for you. And once you hit the majority, you win.
Okay. And do you, like, right now, I know it's probably still a little early, but do you know anybody who you may be running against right now for the mayor seat?
I don't wanna mention any names, but yeah, there's a couple of candidates that have surfaced, but until they file, the first day you can file for that office is January thirteenth. The last day you can file is February twelfth.
Okay.
Until that window has closed, we won't know. Anybody can speculate or talk, but until that happens, Gary, you don't know.
Okay, that's awesome. And has the city of Arlington ever had, you know, a black mayor or a person of color in the mayor position?
Yeah. Only once, they had Mayor Elzy Odom. He was the first African-American mayor of the city of Arlington.
Okay, nice, nice. And, and you kinda align like with his principles, his views, you know, what he wanted, you know, with the city?
I, I think we pretty much align. I'm more of a progressive when it comes to doing things a little bit different. We've got, we've got to focus on equity within our city.
Yes.
We have to do that.
Okay. And so, you know, I, I've, I've been, you know, screaming this for so long, for years now, because I wanna see it happen. I feel like it can benefit the city, and we've talked about it before. Buses, how do you feel about public transportation coming to the city?
So we do have Arlington V I F, which is a uh, ride-share program.
Yeah, I've seen like, yeah, those little vans.
That helps us internally. So if I need to get from point A to point B in Arlington, that's a great thing. Cost-effective. But when we're talking about commuter traffic, commuter traffic getting you from outside the Arlington area to your destination, your workplace, we've gotta come up with a different modal of transportation. I, I don't want empty buses on the road because whenever we look at investing in an asset, you wanna maximize your return. If you got an empty bus on our roads, you're not maximizing.
It's not making money.
That's exactly right. So we want to be able to make money with the assets we do have. In order to do that, you can't have empty buses. But we do know we have a large population that commute in and out of Arlington to Dallas, Fort Worth to work.
Yes.
If we can connect them from their location to a modal or uh, station where they can access mass transit, that would be productive. It would free up our traffic, it would improve the air quality, it would minimize the time, response time if there was an incident on a highway.
Yeah.
So it, it's a plus, but we have to do it thoughtfully and cost-effective.
Okay, so like, uh, you being mayor, is that something you would try to like, you know, implement?
That's right. The mayor has a vision and he leads the city. The mayor is the chair of the council. He actually, he actually leads the meeting.
Yes.
But he's the only spokesperson for the council.
Okay.
And so he kinda sets his vision out. He gets support and relates supports, not only of the council, but also the community and the business community.
And I've seen, uh, you know, I've, I've read an article or two about, you know, there was a mayor in a town in California, you know, he was a black mayor, and he actually did something where he set up some type of like stipend, like as a form of like reparations to, you know, black people and people of color in his city. Like, how do you feel about, you know, reparations? And like, would you do something like that as mayor?
Well, reparations requires actual having access to cash. And where our city is funded through property tax, sales tax, fine fees, permit, we are tapped out when we pay for our first responders, when we pay for all the other city employees, when we pay for parks, library and recreation, when we pay for upkeep. Where do we come up with additional money is the question. And what are you willing to give up in order to give it? And that's the question. So right now, it would be hard for me to entertain that idea. We just don't have the resources.
Yeah, yeah. And like, yeah, and I've said it before, but like, I feel like we could've had a lot of resources from this Texas life situation, right? Like?
That's a different discussion at a different time.
Man, yeah. We definitely gotta get you back in the studio, man.
And then once you, once you spend all those resources, then what?
Man.
Then what? Once you spend, cuz once that money is spent, then what? It's not like it's a, in uh, it's like, not like annuity that you get every year. But once you get that lump sum, then what? How do you invest it?
Yeah, like how everybody got the, the stimulus thing.
That's right, and that money is gone.
Yeah, so I mean, did you, were you in support of that? Like, how did you feel about that?
I was supportive of stimulus cuz our, we, we got to keep our economy going. We have to.
Yeah.
And that determines our quality of life.
And that's why I feel like if there was a way the city can set up something like with the mayor to where like, more black people and people of color can get some type of like reparation or stipend or stimulus check, you know, so we can invest back in ourselves, we can build more businesses and organizations, and we're not giving all our money to billionaires and giving them like tax abatements and stuff like that.
But that, that's a wise quote. You can uh, give a man fish and he eats for one day, or you can teach him, so let's empower our community.
Yeah.
So in the long term, they do have a skillset to run businesses. They, and that keeps the system growing and growing. But if we build that equity in the way we award contracts, that helps us get there.
Yeah, okay, that's awesome. That's great, that's great. And uh, yeah, uh, I'm, uh, you know, we're gonna go ahead and uh, wrap it up uh, in just a minute, you know, because uh, we gotta get out of here, you know, I gotta go take care of some things. I know you mentioned, you gotta take care of some things, right? Yeah, what you got going on? You wanna mention?
I gotta get a fly cut.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go see my boy Dak Rogers, uh, and he, he hooks me up every other month.
That's awesome, okay. City councilman gotta stay fly, huh?
That's right.
Yeah, what you gonna get? Like the taper on the number two or like what you? Whatever.
Hey, that's my secret.
Yeah, I dig it. Okay, the councilman special. That's awesome, that's awesome. Well, uh, that's Straightforward with Strip right here on Fishbowl Radio Network, FBRN dot U S. Check out the stream, check out the shows before and after me. Go to the website, W W W dot F B R N dot U S. Check out all the awesome hosts and the content we have available right now. And hit us up if you're interested in one of our services. This is Straightforward with Strip with your boy Strip. We were in the studio live with Arlington City Councilman of District three, Marvin Sutton. He's gonna be running for mayor. When again?
May first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, awesome, man. What do you think is gonna set you apart from our previous mayors? And like, why should we vote for you, Mr. Marvin Sutton, Councilman?
Well, I've been made a commitment, lifetime commitment, not only to our country, not only to our flying community, but also to our city. I'm engaged, I'm active, I have great ideas. Matter of fact, I'm trying to call us a group of diverse opinions to create good public policies. And so I'm reaching out to everyone I can to ask their ideas where they think the city could be. So it's a, it's a campaign of inclusion, campaign of diversity.
Okay, awesome, nice. So yeah, you gonna, you gonna make it more fair and economically equal and everything, especially black people and people of color, you know what I'm saying? That's what we represent. And so you do feel like there is some improvements we can make for us?
Absolutely, absolutely. No organization is at a point where they don't need to improve. Cuz once you stop improving, you die, you become stagnant.
Hmm, okay. That, that's, that's amazing. I, I really.